I'll bring our meeting back to session and we will start as always with the Pledge of Allegiance if you all please stand. The flag is over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. On behalf of the board, thank you all for coming. We really appreciate your attendance. We will start with our comments from the public for any items that are not on our agenda. Okay, thank you. Do we have any amendments to the agenda, Board? I don't believe we have any amendments. I will make one notation. This is not an adjustment to our agenda, but under the superintendent's report, we will be talking about the school photography bid. That item is warned for action in our consent agenda, so we will be taking action on that kind of late in our agenda, but the superintendent will be providing an update on his criteria for that process early in the agenda for those that want to hear about that and want to comment on that. That being said, we will have the student representative report and announcements. Isaiah, good evening. How are you?
Good.
I'm well, thanks.
So, let's see. On Monday night, it was the first part of a three-part community series with a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. There were about 30 to 40 people in attendance and the next part of the series is scheduled for Thursday, February 23rd, and that will be in the high school cafeteria. The event was hosted by PACT and it was organized by a steering committee of South Burlington students, faculty, and community members. Some of the students involved include representatives from the Student Diversity Union, the Refugee Outreach Club, and Muslim Girls Making Change. To get more information on that event, you can talk to Susan Merrick, myself, or check out the PACT Facebook page. Also, South Burlington High School seniors Ally Barrett and Trevor Houchens were recently named Vermont Presidential Scholars, and that is for outstanding scholarship, leadership, and service to their communities. I just thought it was really cool that both students are from South Burlington High School.
That's great.
Just shows what kind of awesome kids we have at our school.
Absolutely.
Additionally, the South Burlington High School Refugee Outreach Club has just begun a new project and they're going to be making bracelets with short messages to send to students in Ghana where the CDU rock president Natalie Meyer is currently volunteering. And then the students in Ghana will receive those messages and then send back some of their own, so a sort of cultural exchange. So that is a cool project. And also, there's a pep rally planned for tomorrow, and that is organized by the Athletic Leadership Council, which is kind of a change if they are normally organized by student council.
Thank you. Any other announcements from board members? All right. One thing that I will just announce, just as a protocol for tonight, there is a sign-up sheet if you do want to make comments about the Rebel Name Conversation. There's a sign-up sheet. We are going to be using that tonight, so just raise your hand and that'll come out to you if you have not already signed up. City and school collaboration. So David Young and myself periodically meet with this city council chair and the city manager. We have not met since the last time this meeting was gathered. Is that correct, David?
That's correct.
All right. So we have no update on that for this particular agenda. And that brings us to the superintendent's report. So David, I'll turn it over to you for the budget communication and the school photography update.
Yep. So at your place, Board, you have the new or another draft update on the proposed budget. We've solicited feedback from many of you. Again, we pushed out the first draft. We had quite a few corrections that we need to make, so again, I thank you for your feedback. We have a series of other things that we need to be doing. Obviously, this is going to be another paper ad. In addition, we are going to be meeting with all of our staff to make sure, and our PTOs, we're going to be working to set those up here in the next couple of weeks. Again, just making sure that folks are informed about our budget, our budget process, and allow for folks to ask questions and to be responded to. Again, if there's folks that are interested in that, I would encourage them to connect with their PTOs and find out when those dates are at any of our schools so we can help answer questions. So with that, I don't know if there's some specific questions on the budget communications beyond what you have.
Any questions?
Wendy, you have a feedback?
It's always like, right away. We have a little bit of leeway on this one. I think we were putting a marker, "Do you know Meg," off the top of your head when we were on the...
I'm sorry, but this is going to try to get it in for next week.
Right. So early Monday, Tuesday, if we could have it back from board members, if you can do it sooner, that'd be fine, too. But that's, it's fine.
Any other questions? Okay. The school photography.
So again, as you said, Patrick, thanks. It is on the consent agenda for the Board. It's included in your packet, the bid responses, and again, the purpose of the bid, and I want to just make sure I provide this to the whole group. In the past, again, we've had good service from our photographers for a good long time. That said, we've also had the ability and PTOs, again, our PTOs are great and do a lot of wonderful things for our students, but at the same time, I wanted to make sure that we got the best possible cost for our school photography so that a mom, dad, and guardian can buy the package that best fits them and can extend to the neighbors and grandma, grandfather, aunt, uncle, et cetera, and really don't want it to be a moneymaker. Again, I went to the PTOs, I talked with them, I recognized that I'm pulling important resources back, but at the same time, wanted to make sure they were aware that, you know, we were going to have some money available if they were unable to do certain programs. So what you have in front of you is we had four folks, four groups respond, and pushing forward two of those that are included in the bid recommendation and the consent agenda. This was, again, part of the bidding process. We've also been guided by our auditors who've said we need to be watchful about our impress accounts or funds that come into the district and we need to have systems in place, so this is also in response to that, as well as making sure we get the best possible price. I would say kind of thirdly, it was also important for me to support the PTOs. We have a large group of folks that do, you know, a ton of work for our schools, and I wanted them to be able to have at least have a conversation with me about the relationship that they have with their photographers. So we worked all that into this, and that's what is being presented to you folks in the consent agenda. So I'm happy to take questions from the Board if you have any regarding the photography bid.
Again, this is not for actually at this point, but are there questions from the Board? How about from the public? Are there any comments from the public on the photography bid topic? I have one.
Is your goal to limit the number of photographers? I mean, what if they all come in and meet a rate that you're, that are acceptable? Can the PTOs still have the flexibility to choose?
I think more, I think, you know, the more that want to submit bids, I think it will always be part of the conversation. I always think it's important, though, to have participation by the PTOs. They're integral to the process and making sure that, you know, it happens and they're supporting the photographers, so I want to make sure that's there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? Yes?
I'm curious, like, regardless of which photographer you go with, what in the Board, if you go district-wide with one photographer, what type of contract are you looking for? Like, what kind of terms, like three-year, every year, five-year? I'm just curious for, like, do negotiations and things like that?
I mean, I think it would be smart to try to do it on more than a one-year basis because there's a lot that goes into, you know, doing that, but I think at the onset, first year, we wanted to just begin the process and make sure that we began that. And then, moving forward, we also do have the high school and the middle school that could become part of this as well. And that's not to say we want to limit to only one, but we want to make sure, again, my goal here is to make sure that we can get the best possible price to the mom, dad, and guardian so that it can be, you know, widely, those pictures can be widely dispersed and put up on counters and refrigerators and as many places as possible. I know that's really important to the relationship development for our children.
I want to let you, I really, I have to commend you all for the comments that you made that you do not want to see us be a moneymaker, and I wholeheartedly agree on that. As a parent, I think that if the PTOs, I know they have the struggles with raising funds for what they do for the school, but something like photography, if they can put that money back in and reduce the actual cost of the packets to the families, it's just going to be that much better. That's just my opinion, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you. All right. That's going to move us on to Agenda Item 8, which is our conversation on the Rebel Identifier. I'd like to start by setting a little bit of a process for our conversation this evening. There's obviously a number of people that would like to speak tonight, and this is a, I know, very passionate conversation for a lot of people, so we've, I've got a little bit of a process check that I want to do so that we all know how this is going to flow. So the first thing I really want to just really encourage us all to do is be really respectful. I know I've gotten a lot of emails and a lot of communications on this, and I have received a lot of really respectful, different opinions on both sides of this, and I just want to make sure that in this forum tonight, we keep our tone respectful. I don't, I want to really encourage us to, if somebody has an opinion you disagree with, I don't, we don't want, as a Board, people being shouted down from the audience. We want everybody's voice to be heard. We are an inclusionary group, and everybody that's in this room and everybody in this community has a right to have their opinion, and their reality is their reality. So we're going to work with that and assumption that everybody's intent is a positive intent, and we're going to work together toward an endgame on this. So that's my little bit of a speech. I apologize if that's not welcome. Our process is going to be, David is going to provide his recommendation, and he'll outline what he thinks we should be doing next. I will then ask the Board to query David on any questions they have and any suggestions they may have or any kind of tweaking that they may want to suggest to his recommendation. When that conversation is complete, I will then ask the Board members if they have a position that they would like to make public at this point, understanding that we are going to have comments. Those are not their final positions necessarily, but they are where they are standing today so that everybody knows where the Board is at this point. Following that, we will open it up to public conversation. I've got the starting list of people that would like to speak here. We'll ask that people come up to the table, say their name, and state their opinion. I think we've got a manageable list right now. Just because you're names on the list, you do not have to speak. If someone speaks and you agree with them, you can feel free to skip. You can feel free to come up here and say, "I agree with that, with what someone just said," and go right back down. It's up to you. We want to respect your voice, but we do want to move the process forward. As people are speaking, if you feel like you want to clap, I would just urge you to be sensitive. We want everybody to feel respected, so those that are not clapped for are going to feel a certain way. We've got time constraints on our side, so I want to respect everybody's urge to kind of make sure their points are being heard and they can support each other, but I also want us to get through this very respectfully and very timely. I think that's the process, oh, I'm sorry. Following the public comment session, we'll bring it back to the Board. The Board will have a conversation about whether or not they feel there's an action warranted for tonight, whether they want more information, whether they've changed their views, whether they've augmented their views in any way, and then we'll see if the Board chooses to take action at that point. Okay? Any questions from the Board? Anything I missed? All right. Mr. Young, it's up to you.
Thank you, Pat. So oftentimes, in life, we stand at crossroads with a choice of which direction to take. Sometimes, that direction is not clear. Oftentimes, the direction is so clear that to not act would have lasting negative repercussions. This is true of the decision that I announced today. I am recommending to the school Board that as of the start of the new school year, August 2017, the South Burlington School District no longer uses Rebels or the Rebel Identifier as a mascot. This recommendation has not been made quickly, nor has it been made lightly. However, I make this recommendation with the utmost confidence that this is the best decision, the right decision, for our schools. Change has occurred since the Board made the decision about the Rebel Identifier about a year and a half ago. At the time, the school Board made the decision based on information they had. Now we have additional information to offer our school Board that has led me to my recommendation to them. As superintendent of schools, I have arrived at my recommendation having listened to many points of view expressed both publicly and privately by current and past students, staff, families, and community members. Some of the stories I've heard involve reference to history and other shared personal experiences. All were meaningful. What has guided my decision today is that I want all students to feel safe and included in our schools and in the South Burlington community. It has become crystal clear to me that the current Rebel Identifier is interfering with all students' ability to feel safe and included in our schools. That is unacceptable to me and should be unacceptable to everyone. This clarity has led through stories referenced above and also through the following: training and learning that we've been doing as a staff around diversity, equity, and inclusion, local and national events, a series of surveys that were conducted both at the high school and after our implicit bias training this past fall. They further affirmed my decision and made clear to me that we have work to do in these areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our school community. The additional information that informed my decision entitled "The Rebel Identifier" has been made available to each of you Board members and are placed by your side in your packet tonight. This is not the time in schools to hesitate about decisions that involve inclusion. World, national, and local events require from each of us a compassionate courage, the kind of courage that refutes the status quo and makes clear to every single student and their family that they are safe and included in our schools. I am aware that many students who have traveled through our system have recognized themselves as Rebels and have taken pride in that. I'm not immune to the fact that my recommendation will require a shift in perspective for some. I have lived here, raised my children here, and have worked here long enough to see the positive impact of being collaborative and inclusive. I therefore have complete faith in our community that we are up to the challenge of making this change together. John Dewey is credited by saying, and I quote, "What the best and wisest parents and guardians want for their own children must be what the community wants for all its children. Any other ideal for our schools is narrow and unlovely. Acted upon, it destroys our democracy." We are a proud community who cares about every child who attends our schools, and my recommendation is that we continue to do that and we retire the Rebel Identifier. Thank you.
Board, what I'd like to do next, as you know, Pat Burke is not able to be with us. This is an important topic to he and his staff. I'm happy to say I'm accompanied here by Pat Phillips, the interim principal and Lieutenant McDonald. I'm going to ask Pat Phillips to come forward and read a statement prepared by Pat Burke. He wished he could have been here, but unfortunately, he's not supposed to be in the crowds. He does give his hello. Thank you, Pat Phillips.
Good evening, and thanks for giving us this opportunity to share Mr. Burke's viewpoint. I want to take a little bit of leeway prior to that, though, because I want to share with folks here an announcement I made the other day, because we are sort of at the crossroads as a school in terms of where this issue plays out. At the high school, probably more than any other place in the school, people are very passionate about this. This is sort of a modification of what I read the other morning. It's a few sentences. "As you are all aware, we're living in a challenging time. Whether it's the recent elections, changes in immigration policies, or even the name of our school teams, emotions are running strong. Because of that, it's important that we take a moment to reflect upon who we are with regard to how we treat one another. My hope is that all of us will acknowledge the fact that we are one school community. Regardless of where you stand on these issues or any number of other issues, it's essential that we treat each other with respect in spite of the fact we have different perspectives. Across our school community, a variety of opinions exist. We can either let these divide us or we can respectfully disagree. Let us recognize that our diversity, including diversity of perspectives, makes us a stronger community which values expressions of kindness, caring, and support for one another in striving to make our country, our state, our community, and ourselves better. So as we move forward, let us speak to one another in a manner that will serve to unite us rather than divide us." So that's what I shared with the students the other day, and at this point, I'd like to share from my colleague, Pat Burke, who many of you know has been at South Burlington roughly, for roughly 20 years, and has been a tremendous supporter of the community and the school. And this is from Mr. Burke. "The issue of the Rebel Identifier has been challenging, and I think our community needed this process to play out as it has. If cultural competency and cultural humility offer reasonable lenses for viewing this issue, and if they reflect points on a continuum, then I believe we need to move through those points to arrive where we are. Last fall, all five Board members read thoughtful statements when voting in favor of keeping the name and tasked us with the further clarification of the name. The charge was made with the best of intentions. The process and discussion last year were complicated, and to be fair to the Board, some of the most salient points in opposition to the name were made after the Board's decision was announced. When the issue was discussed in and out of school, a number of students and staff remained hesitant to share their opinions. That dynamic remains. Students and staff on all sides of this issue continue to feel uncomfortable expressing their views. The fact alone, that fact alone is the major reason that I support Mr. Young as he asked the Board to embrace a new direction. I expect that there will be discussion as his recommendation unfolds. I think it's important to seek a solution without winners or losers. For me, the fact that there is a degree of disunity about this symbol that exists expressly to unify our school is enough to inspire us to do better. Is the Rebel name inherently racist or bad? In my opinion, it's not. Countless examples of rebel-ness exist in our culture that are positive, but because we cannot escape the unfortunate historical Confederate context, going forward, it's no longer a symbol of the SBHS of today and that we can 100% rally around. We need to change, not because one side has won the argument. We need to change because an argument about something that exists to unify us continues to divide us. We can do better. At one time, I admit it was easier for me to look beyond the most unfortunate connotations of Rebel, but now I cannot look students and staff, look at students and staff who are uncomfortable with the name in the eye and say, "Too bad." I can, however, work with those who love the name and make sure we honor the good they genuinely feel about being a South Burlington Rebel. When former students say, "Once a Rebel, always a Rebel," they're sharing their experience with the name. For a long time, the Rebel name was successful at unifying the community around the school we love. Even though it's no longer as powerful as it once was, I understand those views of those who are expressing frustration with the prospect of a change. Our community has done this before when we abandoned the Rebel guy in the 1990s, and here we are again. How can we ask current student athletes who are not comfortable with the name to wear a uniform with the word Rebels written across the front? How can we distribute Rebel unities to students and staff who told us they feel excluded? It's no one's fault that the rebrand movement is hard to further. It just is. I believe our school's culture of empathy and openness actually contributes to this lack of comfort with the rebranding. I also believe that students and staff at SBHS are open to saying, "I never thought of it that way," but if you do, I get it. Recently, we had a Rebel Unity Day, and some expressed a lack of desire to wear their Rebel shirts. This is an example of how we are trying to rally, how we're attempting to rally around something that is undermining our goal of unifying our school. I believe the right thing to do in this situation may not be the popular thing to do, and I accept that many people I truly respect and care about will not understand. While our community and alumni voices matter, this decision is about our school and our students now and going forward. If asked, I am willing to provide the Board with procedural ideas about next steps in a new direction, and I thoroughly support Mr. Young's recommendation. Sincerely, Patrick Burke, Principal, South Burlington High School.
Thank you, Pat. So at this point, I'm happy to turn it back over to the Board. One thing I would say is, again, at your place, you know, I delineated some bullet points specific to kind of the past, the present, and also some bullet points to the future. And I'm certainly happy to receive some questions from you related to that or answer any questions that you might have based on my recommendation to you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Patrick.
Do we have questions on the recommendation to the Board that is in front of us?
I have a question. Oh, which one is?
That one. There you go.
David, have...
Not that one. Sorry, Elizabeth.
Just move that one away a little bit. This one? Oh, gotcha. A little further away. David, I had a question on your recommendation relative to student engagement in a process for change. Have you given thought to that?
Cut off, Elizabeth.
Sorry.
Process for change.
Student engagement in a process for change.
Honestly, I, the question was around process for change. Again, as I've delineated in the kind of the future next steps, you know, I want to be sensitive to me being at the helm of the district, but at the same time, supporting administrative feedback similar to what you heard with Pat Burke's and Pat Phillips' statements in the high school and the middle schools desire. I do think that it would be important for us in next steps to come back fairly soon to the Board and start to begin to frame up what those steps would be. What I've said, and again, we're going to make this available on the website so people can look at both the statements that have been read as well as these that have been provided, but a couple of the bullet points, the next steps may include, yet not be totally limited to, the following: a thoughtful way to retire the identifier. Again, as Pat Burke read and both Pat Phillips indicated, how we celebrate the past but move on. A thoughtful way to make changes to our school items such as signage, uniforms, and the many other areas where we may have the Rebel name. And a mindful discussion on how we would choose a new mascot, and again, most importantly, as I say here, how we continue to do the work around continued education for all of us. So I didn't exactly get right at your question, Elizabeth, but I think most importantly would be to come back to you once I have the opportunity, if you make that decision, to come back with administrative feedback that would involve students, staff, and community feedback around those next steps. Any other questions from the Board for David? Seeing none, what I'll do now is ask the Board, and I'm happy to start, if they have a statement they'd like to make about their current position on the Rebel name in light of the recommendation, and then following that, we'll open it up for public comment. Thank you. About 15 months ago, I made, excuse me, my position known that we should keep the Rebel name and work to take ownership back of this word. My reasoning at the time was that if we were to put the word in a box and say it is tainted, we are in essence giving away the power to the history or those that use the word in a racist or a non-inclusionary way. I felt that as an inclusionary and supportive community, we should not give in. We should not allow the negative to taint who we are. We should in some way take back the word, redefine it, and stand together in solidarity with what we refer to as rebranding. Today, I can say with confidence that my intent was in the right place, but my approach was wrong. My approach was wrong not because we failed in our rebranding efforts, not because any group or individual did or did not do something over the past 15 months, but because, very simply, there are members of our South Burlington community and more directly, our student simply, there are members of our South Burlington community, and more directly, our student body, that consider the word offensive and not inclusive of who they are. We teach many things here in South Burlington, not the least of which is history. We teach our students our country's history on racism and bias, and whether we are talking about the color of skin, gender, sexual orientation, or anything else our society has used to label people, our historical track record is not the gold standard. The South Burlington School District has its own history, of course, which does include the Confederate flag with its connections to slavery. Our history also includes movement away from that beginning, although not a complete move as the nickname and colors have been retained. That being said, I do think we have continually worked to be inclusive, not just this past year or two, but over the long term. A big part of that proud tradition is being humble enough to listen when anyone comes to us saying they are not feeling safe being included or welcomed into our district and community. That is what I have tried to do: listen, discern, and educate myself on things like implicit and explicit bias. I've spent time talking with community members, students, and leaders I respect. Through these conversations and self-education, I know the right thing for us to do is to initiate a process to move South Burlington away from using the Rebel name. To the many of you who treasure the tradition of the Rebel name, in your own personal South Burlington proud history, you should remain proud. A change to move away from the Rebel name would not be a negative statement on you, your class, or South Burlington's history. The comments I've heard about keeping the Rebel name are about keeping the positive energy that comes with the good work, strong relationships, and proud history of people's time in the school system, both for themselves and their children. I also know that a change away from the Rebel name is also sought with positive intent, where we can move explicitly, where we can more explicitly state our intent to be inclusive and welcoming of everyone. It is the idea of inclusion that I encourage us to focus on as we move forward. Inclusion by its very definition includes us all: our alumni, our community, our students, and our future students. It is my belief that moving to a new nickname or mascot will represent everyone without any exclusion. Thank you. Why don't we go from this way? We'll start with Bridget.
Yeah. Is it okay? All right. First, let me frame my remarks by saying that there are many reasons to be proud to be or have been a part of the South Burlington School District. We are seen as one of the premier school districts in the state. Families move here specifically so their children can attend our schools. Close to 200 students who have a choice of any public high school in the state choose ours. We send students to top universities across the country, and our students win numerous academic awards and scholarships every year. We help many students launch themselves on exciting career paths directly out of high school. Our sports teams represent our schools and our community in a positive way, help our students develop as individuals, and form lasting bonds and memories with each other. Our arts programs encourage students to express themselves and develop skills that will enrich their lives and the lives of others. There are too many reasons to be proud of our district to list them all here tonight. With that context, I'd like to address the issue at hand. In 2015, after months of discussion amongst the community, the previous board voted to retain the Rebel identifier. At the same time, the board requested that the administration act to rebrand the Rebel identifier and develop curriculum around the different positive meanings of the name. Though I wasn't a member of the board at the time, I followed the debate closely. I believe that decision reflected the many positive associations that many members of our community have with the term Rebel, and the hope that we could retain those positive associations while distancing ourselves further from the negative connotations associated with the Confederate roots of the name. Rather than focus specifically on the Rebel name, the administration has chosen to prioritize a broader approach to address issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our district. I believe this broader approach is what is needed to fulfill one of our missions, which is to help our students become global citizens with a perspective beyond their own community. As part of this work, along with additional research and reflection by the administration and the board, as well as additional feedback from students within our community, it has become clear to me that no amount of rebranding will make the Rebel name feel inclusive and welcoming to all our students and families. We can no longer expect students who feel unsafe and excluded in a significant way from our school community to continue to wait for us to take action. It is our responsibility to ensure that we are providing a positive and inclusive learning environment for all of our students. As a result, I believe that it is time to retire the Rebel identifier. I've been listening carefully to opinions and concerns on both sides of the issue. I'm concerned that the Rebel name will continue to divide our community as long as it is in place. It is time for us to do the hard work to change the name and ensure that all of our students and faculty, both those who support the change and those who are against it, feel that their voices are heard and respected as part of the process. None of the reasons for being proud of our district that I mentioned at the outset changes if we change the name we use to identify ourselves. I hope that those with positive memories of being Rebels continue to cherish those memories and the experiences they had at South Burlington High School regardless of how we vote here tonight. This is an opportunity for South Burlington to continue building a proud tradition. I hope that we can use this moment to show our students how to face the challenges of living in an ever-evolving society in a positive way. I hope that we can truly listen to one another, find empathy for those with different experiences than our own, and stand up for what we believe is right while still being respectful of others. I look forward to being part of the engagement between members of our school community as we work together to determine how we will present ourselves as a district going forward. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
I looked at the, I did vote to retain the Rebel name about 15 months ago, and along with my board colleagues at the time, and I really wanted to talk a little bit about-- is this one on?
I don't know what is going on. Sorry about that.
That's all right. I wanted to talk a little bit about what has changed since the last board discussion and the community dialogue. First off, current students have come forward and expressed that some were not comfortable voicing their concerns and interest in changing the nickname. All right. I'm not sure what that is. Are we okay, David?
I'm trying. I'm trying.
It's just me. I'll-- All right, I'll try that again. Current students have come forward and expressed that some were not comfortable voicing their concerns and interest in changing the nickname due to historical imagery used at the school and its clear link with the practice of slavery in the Confederate South. Other new information is that our superintendent has provided us with survey results which indicate similar feedback from a number of students and staff. In addition, the rebranding proposal which was requested of administration last fall was recently presented to the board. The values of the district are laid out in our ends policy, and I often return to those as a board member to reinforce our guiding principles. Among them, in our global end statement, we say that our students will show cultural and academic competence appropriate to grade and developmental capacity as they ready for their next step. In disposition for lifelong learning, we talk about our students generating different perspectives and collaborating with others. In personal development, we reference building supportive relationships and respectfully advocating for self and others. And in citizenship, we require that our students understand and express how diverse cultures and people enrich the human experience, that students demonstrate respect for self and others, and that they support socially responsible actions to benefit the local and global community. We ask that they be proud of their shared experience, and perhaps most importantly, we ask that they engage others with honesty, humility, kindness, and good humor. In the board's code of conduct, we commit to represent the interests of the citizens of the entire school district. In this community, I believe we acknowledge and value that each of our personal histories and perspectives are unique, and both are valued and valid. I made my decision over a year ago based on much public input and deliberation. One of my specific statements was that, "I believe it will be our school's community's actions which best reflect the culture we believe we foster in South Burlington." I also stated that I believe the current Rebel nickname did not stand in the way of accomplishing our ends. I still believe it is our school community's actions which reflect the culture we choose to foster in SB, but I've come to also believe that the nickname does stand in the way of accomplishing our ends for many students and their families. When I think about a recommendation here and our superintendent's specific recommendation, I think about fears and I think about hopes. Some of my fears are that anyone perceives that this discussion and decision is having winners and losers, or that anyone diminish an individual's personal history and perspective by characterizing it as right or wrong. Some of my hopes are that we model behavior for our children that represents the high standards of civil discourse and respect for others, that our students with the support of administration and educators will lead a process for change which is inclusive and forward-looking, and that we honor our respective and collective personal histories and unite to engage others with honesty, humility, and kindness. Thanks.
Thank you. Oops, my bad. Martin?
I support the well-reasoned recommendation of the superintendent. I also agree with the fine statements of Principals Burke and Phillips, and the points that my fellow board members have made. While we've heard from reasonable people on both sides of this issue, it is clear to me that the right step is to retire the Rebels name. Student staff and community members can be rightly offended by the district's use of the Rebels name. They rightly feel that the name is not consistent with a welcoming, inclusive school environment. But I must also note that many people legitimately celebrate their school pride, which they associate with that name. I do not think that those who want to keep the name do so with ill intent. They are tied to a long tradition in the district. But I don't believe we can ignore any longer the origin of that tradition. I don't think we can fix the name to sufficiently distance it from the tradition. We should no longer ignore the history of the Rebels name, that it is contrary to the inclusiveness we strive to have in the district, or to the increasing diversity of our student body and our community. Retiring the Rebels name is the right thing to do. This should not take away the pride that we have in our schools. Indeed, we should be proud that we have seen the harm that the Rebels name can cause. We should be proud that we are willing to show that we are serious about being a welcoming district to all students, staff, and community members by retiring the Rebels name. Thank you.
Julie?
I want to thank all of you for coming out here tonight, and I hope next week you're here for discussing policy. My opinion about the issue of the school nickname has evolved as a result of new information--
Switch that mic out, Julie.
Okay, sorry. Okay. Sorry. My opinion about the issue of the school nickname has evolved as a result of new information, continued education, and a desire to create unity. As an alumni of the school district, I have always been fond of the nickname, not because the name in itself signified anything specific to me, but rather because it represented a shared history with friends and classmates who have been educated here and were launched into adulthood from South Burlington High School. I acknowledge that there are negative connotations associated with the name for some in our community. It has become clear that we have students who have not felt comfortable voicing their opinion about the name on both sides of the issue. I have heard from students this week who feel strongly connected to the Rebel name but feel intimidated by voicing that opinion. And I have also heard from students who are offended by the name but feel equally uncomfortable with open dialogue around the topic. This is unacceptable to me. We are one community, and no matter what is happening on the national stage, we need to come together and model for our students that respect for diverse opinions, open dialogue, and a common goal will always unite us. Our sense of pride in our school comes not from the name itself, but from the grit, tenacity, and yes, the very hearts of our students. I believe that we should begin a thoughtful process by which the Rebel name is changed. The process, in my opinion, should involve alumni, community members, and current students. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Isaiah?
Is this mic going to work?
I think--
Speak loudly. So I wrote this statement a few months ago, kind of also during the debate, and I think it really reflects the feelings that I had about the decision that was made last year. And I've modified it a bit to kind of update it, of course. So here's what I have. During much of the conversation on the Rebel name, I have spoken on behalf of all of those who support the change. However, as one of the few African-American students at South Burlington High School, my position is unique. The Rebel name has a particular significance to me because of my racial identity. For those of you who are still unaware, "The Rebels" was the name given to the soldiers who fought for the Confederacy, a coalition of southern states who rebelled by attempting to secede from the rest of the country. Their primary reason for secession was in order to uphold the enslavement of Black Americans, some of whom were my own ancestors. This group of Rebels, the one that our school identifier references, was undoubtedly rooted in racism. I acknowledge that the decision to be known as "The Rebels" was made decades ago and was not chosen with the intent to discriminate or exclude. But I also know that in our community and many others in contemporary society, racism is rarely meant. In places like South Burlington, I've found that racism rarely looks like hate crimes and racial slurs and the very overt and purposeful things that we imagine racism to be. More often, we see racism in the unintended comments and subconscious actions. You might even say it's relatively easy to be accidentally racist. However, over time, I've learned that just because you didn't mean it doesn't mean that your actions or words weren't harmful. Similarly, no one intended the Rebel name to be exclusive and racially insensitive, and yet the harmful effects are still very real. When you say or do something harmful, even if you didn't mean it, you still have to take responsibility and fix it, and that is exactly what I want us to do as a school district. When the board made the decision to keep the name last year, it said to me that they had heard the harmful legacy of the name and decided that that didn't matter. To me, it said that they didn't mind keeping the ties to the Confederacy, and that did not sit well with me. I see this as a perfect opportunity to make it clear that this is not what South Burlington stands for. In my view, the only way to move past the racist legacy associated with the Rebel name is for us to engage with that history and finally separate ourselves from it. I can't pretend like this aspect of our school identifier doesn't exist. A rebranding or realigning of the name is not enough. The underlying meaning of the Rebel name will not go away unless we act. I am very sensitive to the fact that the Rebel name has become a part of our school identity. Many feel an emotional attachment to it, and to most, connections to the Confederacy never cross their mind. Many prefer to look at the alternative understanding of the word Rebel, a person who rises in opposition. And it's true that the word Rebel is not inherently racist or exclusive. While I appreciate that interpretation and highly value going against the norm, I feel that this view is not completely honest to our school's history. I can't just ignore the reality of our moniker in order to please those who'd rather not engage with that history. As I've said before, this issue is not as simple as hurt feelings and oversensitivity, and deducing it to that is highly problematic. This is about making all students feel welcome, comfortable, and able to learn. I hope that you can all understand that I am not advocating for the name to change for selfish reasons. I want to move away from the Rebel identifier for the better of our school and for our community. By stepping away from the name, we are transitioning to a new, more welcoming, and more inclusive era of South Burlington, a change that I'm sure would be welcomed by all South Burlington residents.
As promised, now is the time for public comment. I'm going to ask Mr. Young to help me with some of these names because he's used to handwriting more than I am, I would say. more than I am, I would say. Andrea is the first that had signed up.
Andrea Dion.
Andrea Dion. You're good now, all right. Thank you, Andrea. Joanne?
I can't...
Thank you for what you've done.
Megan?
I don't think my words could be better than like this. Thank you.
I think this is Laurel. Lori. Lori.
I'm going to make it quick.
Yep, thank you. Lori, push the button right in the middle of the mic. Let's hope it doesn't. That's all right. You should be there, a little scary tonight.
I think everyone here has spoken very eloquently. I was so impressed by all of your statements. I agree strongly. I really appreciated Mr. Young's statement in particular, and Isaiah, you spoke so well and have said, I think, the key issues at hand. I just want to add that race is a really difficult topic to address, and the only reason I came up to add anything is just because I'm white and I'm not a person of color. I think it's really hard, as a person who's not a person of color, to understand the implications of race for those who are. And I think that's a really uncomfortable conversation, one that is not easy and brings a lot of emotions up, but I feel that we have to do our best to remember that we can't know the experience of someone who is a person of color. So that's one of the main reasons I feel the name should be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Candace. Hi, Candace.
Right here, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Candace. How are you? I'm hearing a lot about how people are voicing and being loud about their feelings, and I appreciate that. But what speaks louder are your actual actions. I've got a son who's been diagnosed with Asperger's Syndrome. Let me just take you through a little walk in his shoes in your halls. See, I see the kids laugh at my son as he walks by. I hear you call him a freak and a weirdo. And to the group of boys who thought it was hilarious to hock-a-loogie on my son as he sat alone underneath the stairs, your message of acceptance was loud and clear. So for me, it is not the Rebel name. Change it if you must. It is not going to change the issue that is happening. It's not this supposed curriculum that you didn't teach these kids something they should already be well aware of is not going to change the issue and tell these kids truly, truly learn what acceptance and what diversity and what truly treating each other with kindness and respect really is is not going to matter if they're Rebels, if they're pilots, if they're whatever. And going forward, I do ask that any more of the Rebel please be kept into the school with the schoolchildren, not the parents. My kids never got the survey. I don't know what survey we're talking about that they voted to, unless I misunderstood, to change. I'm not sure what that was, but my two boys were not included in that, just saying. But... And as I sit here and I see the group of students who are fighting for hope to keep the Rebel name, and as I see the students that are fighting for change, once again, loosely, the definition of a Rebel is someone who fights for hope and for change. And for that, I do think that the Rebel name... If you do not want the Rebel name to be associated with this bagged history, then stop reminding us every minute of the day that it did. But I will support you. If you truly want it to change, I will support. I just hope that every student at South Burlington Middle School and High School is a part of this vote and is a part of what the next name will be made. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace.
I'm with Candace.
Good, thank you. M. Passanen? Melissa, I think.
Is there any... Turn off the microphone because I can hear you now.
I'm going to try. Don't want to freak everybody out. Hello.
Hi. I'm actually here to read a letter from my 19-year-old who graduated in 2015. You guys have all seen it, so this is more for the students and other community members. But I have my back to them, which feels really strange. So this is from Alex Passanen, South Burlington, Clois of 2015. Dear South Burlington community, I once was a student athlete at South Burlington High School. I demonstrated immense pride in my school and community. I am still proud to be a South Burlington alumnus. "Once a Rebel, always a Rebel" used to be an important expression with which I identified and felt motivated by. After the revealing of hard evidence that the Rebel name has explicit ties to the Confederacy, I no longer feel comfortable being proud of the name. The Confederacy obviously stood for values that contradict directly with what I stand for as a person and what I think South Burlington stands for as a community. It's not a hard decision. It is a financial burden, and that is not to be taken lightly. However, CBU did the same thing not long ago. South Burlington can too. Changing the name of a high school mascot is a very small price to pay to create a comfortable environment for communities that have been marginalized since before the United States existed. As a white male in America, I have been granted every privilege and been a part of every conversation I have wanted to be a part of. That does not apply to any other demographic. We have to be aware, it is imperative for the future of my home's community, all the way up to the future of this country, that actions are taken at every level of society to combat the racism, hatred, bigotry that are so pervasive in today's America. Lastly, I admittedly was against the changing of the Rebel name when I was a senior at SB, but it's easy to be close-minded when you grow up in a community that is almost entirely white and distanced from the racism that dominates large sections of our country. Looking back on the South Burlington community from the outside shows to me that we need to acknowledge the bubble we are in and how helpful something as seemingly trivial to some people as the changing of a mascot name can be to create awareness. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can you hear me up there? Okay, if I just spoke in here?
I can hear you, but the recording cannot.
Wait, can you bring the mic there, Mark? I think that I can get out of the chair when I finish. I applaud your decision, and I thank Mr. Young and each member of the board for coming to this decision. Naturally, I'm glad to see this issue brought to a close finally. At the last meeting, Mr. Young proposed a program of instruction which included diversity, equity, and inclusion. I encourage you to continue that program actively within the school, and I encourage you to expand it, to include instruction on racism, which in my view is very different from diversity, equality, and inclusion. Finally, I'd like to congratulate the students who stepped forward and initiated this discussion. They exhibited remarkable courage in standing up for their beliefs, and I applaud them as well. Thank you.
Elise? Elise Goyette?
No, my words would be redundant. Thank you for reconsidering your 15-month-ago decision.
Thank you. Julie?
I have nothing to add. Thank you so much for reconsidering and having the courage to change your minds.
Thank you, Julie. Mary?
Okay, while I'm walking, I'll hello everyone. Everybody's looking at me.
Hi, good evening. First, I want to say thanks for the opportunity, and I also want to remind you that last year, when I was standing at the other school, I said that we would be back. So to let you know, it's 395 days. There are 730 hours in a month. It's been 613,200 minutes. It's been over 60.83 weeks. It was over 426 days that our students have been tortured by the word Rebel. So this is my plea to the students, that last year, everyone on the student board, except for the young lady, I don't think she even had a vote. Yeah, yeah. Nourali, she was the only person... I didn't think she had a vote. She didn't say she had a vote. But the school board voted unanimously. The thing is, students pay attention. This is a great example of politics. This is a great example of how individuals can hurt other individuals. I understand that you all went home for a whole year, over a year, it's been 14 months, and now you feel at peace because you want to change the name. But when I talked to Nourali the other day, she told me about the torture she had to endure weeks and weeks after that. She endured so much torture that night of the school board meeting that we walked her to her car. I was chased out of the building because people said we got it wrong. It was wrong. Chased out of the building. And I thank God that there were other people that had the mindset to escort me to my car. But we cannot stand idly by and let pain overrule. We cannot stand idly by... And I'm looking at the school board members because... Board, because we cannot stand by. How dare you? I told you... I don't even understand how. You slept for a year, knowing that individuals were in pain. Students were in pain. We received letters and calls from them all the time. When I go out and I go to different events for the schools, South Burlington High School students of color would run up to me and say, "Miss Guillory, Miss Guillory." So first, I want to say congratulations to the Student Diversity Union. That was something that was organized in this past year, and I want to give them a hand clap. And I say to the students, "Welcome to Activism 101. We need you." Because our politicians, our school boards, our principals, our superintendents, they won't listen to everyone. They won't listen. And as I said, change has to come from inside. You can look that up from the speech last year I gave. It has to happen internally. It will not happen from voices outside. But school boards, shame on you, because you are the individuals these students were relying on, and you failed them. You need to acknowledge that. Don't pat yourselves on the back. You failed them. And even a mother that was sitting on the school board at the time, who said she had children that were of another race, which I still say the human race is one race, but okay, but she said she had adopted students of color, and I said she needed to go back. Again, I tell you all, because if this is just opening your eyes, you need to go back for more diversity training. You need to try to be more impartial when you're delving out information. You need to be more inclusive in the decisions you make, because this is not just about an icon. This is about humanity. It's not about one thing. It's an umbrella of things. It's an atmosphere of things. So I heard the young lady earlier say that you need to change a lot, and I said... I was back there, I was thinking, they need to change the oxygen. It might be stale. You need to change the atmosphere. It needs to be inclusive. You need to change your actions. It took you over a year, 14 months, to get to this decision. Our children were hurting. Our children were trying to get themselves together on what they could do to change your decisions. We need to change attitudes, because evidently, in a year, if not individuals were calling you and children were not going home to complain to their mothers and their fathers or their caretakers, we would not be here. We need to change how this system works, and coming back after a whole year is too long. I would have said back in the horse-and-buggy days, okay, yeah, a year. But with all the information, and I don't know who you sent these evaluations to, because the parents of color that I talked to that go to the... They didn't say they saw anything or received anything. The students haven't received anything. Another thing is, when you're picking and choosing your new mascot, please let the students be included. Every time I think about Nourali, she used to say that she sat on your committee but was never included. She was never asked to share her voice. She was never tapped on the shoulder for advice, but yet she would come to the meetings every month you had them. So I'm asking that the student body be included on the decision for the new mascot, because I want it to be an inclusive mascot. Another thing is, I'm going to ask that you really learn African, American, and Indian history. You guys talked about your curriculum. I don't know. I don't know what you've been teaching. And then I'm going to ask for empathy, because to make these students wait and wait and wait, because you, and I don't... I mean, I'm looking at you. You people who are not of color, mostly Anglo-Saxon, you can't understand their pain. So you judged and you made a ruling on what you thought. But sometimes, if you are not equipped to make the decision, the right decision, come outside your box or resign your damn post, because our children should not be torn and asked to put up with a symbol like this. Would you ask a Jew to put up with a swastika? Would you ask an American Indian to put up with somebody hanging a scalp? Would you ask a black person, a person of African-American culture to put up with a noose? Shame on you for asking them to put up with this. But to the student body and to the faculty that has been working with the Student Diversity Initiative here, I ask that you teach them more about activism. Teach them more about caring, because this is something about humanity. If you cared enough, it would not have mattered that you were not a person of color. If you cared enough, it would not have mattered that it was the icon for how many centuries. But if you had a heart, you would know that every... But if you had a heart, you would know that every child that walks through that school felt judged, felt ashamed, and embarrassed by the rebel icon. And I have met students at basketball games and football games who told me that they tore... they tore... they'd stopped wearing their jackets and their memorabilia. I've met parents that said, "I didn't know." Well, you're the school board. Put it in your curriculum. That we should have empathy and respect one another and do more. Do more. I'm done.
Amy? Amy?
Is it on? It's on? Okay. So, my name is Amy Lafferty. I am... I'm going to switch the argument over a little bit. I'm a varsity captain for our cheerleading team, so I know, like, as an athlete, kind of our opinion. So, I sent an email earlier today to Mr. Young. I don't know if... I'm sure you've gotten a ton of them. So, I just wanted to throw out some pointers. First thing I wanted to point out is, all of the students I'm sitting with in the back, none of us heard anything about a survey. So, to use that as, like, say, most people are against the change... most people who took the survey are against the change. Most of us didn't... had no idea about it. So, I think it's important to include everyone rather than just those people. Second thing I wanted to point out is, it's our high school. That I understand community members, parents, they all have their own opinions. They had their chance at high school. It's our turn. And I think it should strictly be the student's voice should matter the most, because we're the one attending that school. So, I know Mr. Burke was in charge of creating a curriculum to put the history behind the rebel name into history classes, and that hasn't really been done. However, I've heard some teachers are doing that on their own. I... while petition... while going around to get signatures for our petition, I came across a group of sophomores taking an honors American Studies class, and they said that they learned about the history behind the rebel name last quarter. Not many people are aware of why we're actually called the Rebels. I think it's important that the school board make sure everyone is aware of that history before allowing them to sway a decision. I don't think it's fair to allow people who may not know all the facts about the subject at hand to have the ability to change a school's entire name. And that doesn't just go for my side, that goes for both sides. Our rebel name came from breaking away from Burlington. We rebelled and became the South City. There's a significant history to the Rebels, and that history is not something you guys should take away from us. Our biggest problem is that we're spending time looking at a meaning being Confederacy that has no relevance to the name and hasn't for decades. I understand that some people may disagree with that. But instead, we should be looking back at what the rebel name actually means and why the school board decided on it in the first place. Not only would you be taking away a name, you'd be taking away a story and an identity that is only unique to South Burlington. So, I wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Toni Kael?
I'm good.
You're good? All right. Thank you. Carrie Austin?
Hi, my name is Carrie Austin. I'm a 2013 graduate of SB. I think following this story since fifteen months ago, back when I first heard about it, my opinions have really radically changed. And I've watched my classmates as well, just through social media and through conversations, realize that it's not about what the name used to be and the reason that we so badly wanted to hold on to that was because it's a good memory. But letting go of the name doesn't mean you're letting go of the memories or all of the positive things that this school and this community is. So, I just want to take a moment to really thank you for reevaluating this decision and realizing that it's not about being a privileged student or winning or losing, but it's really about taking the time to respect those students and to make sure that everyone is feeling welcome, whether you're a past, a present, or an incoming student. So, thank you for your time and for that.
Thank you. Jack Mayne?
Good evening. My name is Jack Mayne. And I'd like to start out by saying I have the utmost respect for Isaiah, one of my peers, and also one of my teammates on the track team. I just have to say that I respectfully disagree with Isaiah. Not being said that he has great ideas. It's really hard to make a change in a big high school like we have. And I have nothing but respect for you for doing that. So, thank you for taking a stand. However, I think that the rebel name is not necessarily what it is linked to the Confederacy, as you guys had stated fifteen months ago. I have a shirt here that the cross-country team gives every single year at a training camp in Acadia, Maine. And it's geared towards cross-country, but it basically defines what it means to be a rebel as an athlete, is to honor those who came before you, to have pride, to believe, have courage, carry out the legacy, and respect the journey that it means to become a rebel. As a freshman year on the cross-country team, I came on as a big shot, thinking I was going to be fast and amazing. And then, when Bennett told me that, you know, you have to learn what it means to be a rebel and to identify that it does not mean that you are all that... that you are rebellious and that you are the biggest guy out there. You have to remember that you're part of a team, and that team is what is on the front of your jersey and not the name on the back of the jersey. Today, in Holocaust Studies, we were talking about Muslims and importations and the fact that we all... we are unfortunately living in a government where we think that all Muslims are terrorists. And I had to think, "Well, I don't think that all rebels are Confederates." And I respectfully disagree with the fact that all... that... that the government today thinks that all Muslims are terrorists. I view it as an honor to be a rebel, and I will always view it as an honor to be a rebel. If you change the name, that'll... then the next generation of students will deal with that. But I do respect the fact that there are students out there who do not agree with the rebel name. And if they do... if it does change, I will stand with them 100% because it is something that is very hard to stand up here in front of the school and try to make a big change. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Ryan Sargent?
Good evening. I believe that we should keep the name, because our school itself has already rebranded the name. I do think that the school should and can move further from being associated with the Confederacy. I would like to speak for the other community members that don't have an opinion on the matter. They want to know what the cost would be if it was to change, to replace forty-four teams' worth of uniforms, fixing the scoreboards, to remove the name, and make new signs for organizations like the Rebel Boosters. Rather than erase or get rid of our school history and our country's history, we must accept it and earn... and learn from it. And as we move on in our daily lives, we must strengthen our resolve for equality and inclusion. I think we should keep the name. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Ron Sargent?
Good evening to everybody, and thank you. My decades of experience have led me to believe and practice that whenever there's an emotional issue, or one that's charged with emotions, to look at the facts. And I'll first start out with the fact that when I look at Merriam... I forgot the name of the dictionary. Oh, sorry. Merriam-Webster, thank you. How could I forget? Under the theme Rebel, it doesn't say anything about the Confederacy. It doesn't say anything other than the fact that it's a noun or a verb. As a noun, it's the title of someone who steps against authority and against the status quo. And as a verb, it's the action that's taken that would define you as a rebel. So, if we look back at history, and I'm not a history student or anything like that, but maybe three thousand years ago, whatever, when the Pharaoh let the Hebrew slaves be led from Egypt by Moses, I'm sure in some ancient Egyptian way, he viewed Moses as a rebel. When the Romans were crucifying the Christians, they were viewing them as rebels. Let's get rid of the rebels. There's a number of times all through history where we see that event, including the colonists throwing tea in the Boston Harbor, where everybody, the King of England, saw the colonists as rebels, and they were starting a rebellion. Including the revered Mahatma Gandhi was a rebel. So, there's nothing to be ashamed of in terms of rebel. There was a five-year period in our U.S. history where we were engaged in a terrible war, where there was tremendous human loss and sacrifice, based on something that started two hundred years before that. So, now we're separated by another 150 years, and we're having a discussion about a word. So, my problem with this is that we're... all this energy goes into defining a small piece of an activity, where these misguided, unfortunate Confederate soldiers were given the name Rebel. And it's kind of ironic, because when you look at the Merriam-Webster dictionary, it'll tell you that the word rebel actually comes from a Latin word, termed as rebellious. I probably pronounced that wrong. But it meant that these were the people who were starting a war who already lost. So, it was ironic that the Confederates, who lost, because they were on the wrong side of the moral issue, are referred to as rebels. And I like to think that the history that the South Burlington High School has is to teach the kids to challenge the status quo, to step up and ask the right questions. And again, a little bit of irony, we have a rebel who did just that. He should be proud that he's a rebel, because he did bring it to the forefront. But I don't think spending $10,000 to change labels and uniforms and names and everything like that really serves the community. What might better serve the community is educating everybody on the tradition of being a rebel. Whether you're sought... or whether you're viewed in history in not a good way, like Mao Zedong, Pan Tuvia, there's a number of instances we could talk about. They all, in their own way, were rebels, but I don't think they took the moral high ground. So, that's... I just wanted to come by and share that opinion and let everybody know that there are other ways of viewing the word rebel. It's not a term that the Confederacy carried all along. And in closing, I just want to highlight that slavery was not and is not a United States issue. It started globally, right, probably the first time there's human conflict. It goes on today, and yet nobody says anything. We all focus on what happened 150 years ago. And so, again, I ask if you're going to educate our students on the issues of slavery, just eight months ago, the Department of Health... excuse me, Department of Homeland Security issued a video on human trafficking and how, not human smuggling, but human trafficking, and horrific things that happened to these young people and sometimes middle-aged. And they are in slavery today, whether it's in the U.S. or some other country. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alex?
Thank you, everyone. I'm Alex McHenry. I'm actually running for school board, so barring some freak event, in about a month or so, I'm going to be on the other side of that table. And I expected to be camped pretty hard.
Alex, we need to... we need to get you on the record.
Oh, sorry. I'm Alex McHenry, and I am running for school board and unopposed, which surprised me. So, barring a freak event, in about a month, I will be sitting behind that table there. I did spend some time and energy in printing a position on the rebel issue and also a little bit of information about me. It pretty much concurs with what most people have said tonight, but if you'd like a copy of it, please take it. I wanted... I wanted to observe some of the things that I've noticed from some of the social media comments that have been made. Some people have said that since South Burlington is becoming a more racially or ethnically diverse, that the time is now to make this change. I disagree with that. I think that if South Burlington was 100% of one race and we all parted our hair in the same direction, the same position should have been taken, to retire the rebel. The rebel doesn't need... doesn't only oppress others. It causes others to oppress. And I think many of us have observed that going on, especially in the past 15 months. And I also want to say a big thank you to Mary Brown Galore for coming to us 15 months ago at probably less than 24 hours' notice. Is that about right, Mary? Is that your recollection? Yep? And coming out here and making such impassioned speeches. I think one of the most important thing that a lifelong learner can do is question their own understanding of the way things are in the world. And sometimes, that can be uncomfortable. And perhaps some of us have done that a long time ago. Perhaps some of us have done that over the past 15 months. But to be able to do that constantly is a great thing, and it's an action that should be taken or that is taken by lifelong learners. And this is a teachable moment, and I'm proud that we're taking this step. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. All right. That concludes the public comment section for this. And I'll bring it back to the board. At this point, do we have any questions, discussion? Any feedback on what we've heard that we would like to discuss as a board?
David? Could... there was a question that came up, and I know we received this in a couple of emails about...
So much for your question.
Question?
I'm not giving her my mic, she'll break my mic. Whisper it to me, and I'll tell somebody else.
I'll ask David, yeah. A question that came up about the staff and students survey. Could you clarify the timing of that and the distribution for the audience and for the public who might watch the tape later?
So, the question around the survey, specifically when it was put out?
And the distribution?
Yeah. So, again, one of the things that happened, Mr. Burke was in charge of putting out the survey. We do... we did get the survey results back, all the staff. Again, a high percentage of staff participated. A high percentage of students participated as well. I can't tell you exactly that number. But again, Mr. Burke, and again, the... But again, Mr. Burke, and again, I'd be happy to allow the board to see more specifically the results. I've in my bulleted points shared with you some of the specifics of that. I'm a little bit careful. I would allow it for the board, for direct inspection. You could look at it. It has some identifiable, very small numbers, and I would like for that not to get out. But again, all of the process, I think, was done on Survey Monkey, and collected, and it was done. I'm not sure, for the folks that say they didn't get it, I'm not really sure of that particular reason or rationale, what happened there.
Any other questions or comments? Martin?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment. I really appreciate the students who spoke on both sides. It was very brave of both sides in doing this. It's a very contentious...
Speak loud.
It's a very contentious issue, and I do appreciate that, particularly actually the students who spoke in favor of keeping the name, given how much applause and how many people spoke for getting rid of the name. I really do appreciate that you did that. So thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. Thank you.
I think they deserve an applause from everybody.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Does the board wish to take action on this tonight? Oh, we have one more public comment, perhaps?
I apologize, I have to step to the ladies room if you decide if everybody was done. I had a quick question. One, I don't think I could say anything better than these students did, because it's their school. But I had a question about, aside from the whether you choose to keep or remove the Rebel name, what about the colors? What about the identifiables with the blue and the gray and the white? I've heard rumors on Facebook, and of course, you know, just because it's on the Internet, it's not true. Do you guys have a plan to change the colors as well?
So the recommendation does not specifically point that level of detail out, but I think what we would do is we'd be taking an action tonight, potentially, to change the Rebel name, and ask the administration to pursue those details within their recommendation.
So it's to be determined later?
I think that's true.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Yes?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm compelled to say something. I am a South Burlington resident. I just gave birth to someone who will be a future student, probably.
Congratulations.
What's bothering me about this discussion, the only thing that's bothering me is we're in 2017. We're in 2017, where I still am reminded of how my people built this country, and we are still disrespected. And so when I think about in 13-some-odd years, when my son may be sitting there, will I still be saying my people are still being disrespected? So I've heard the gentleman over there talk about history and how slavery is a global issue, but I don't care about global. I care about what's happening in the country. I'm black, you're white, because black and white is a social construct meant to divide. So until we get rid of that type of language, 2017 will turn into 2037, 2057, 2087, and we'll still be talking about this issue. I gotta go home to my son.
I want to apologize for not having my name on a list. I consider myself an outsider, although I'm a South Burlington resident of about a year. I had some background problems with this, it made it seem a little strange, even though the parts of the issue were easy to understand. But I have served 23-some-years on school boards, 10 years in the state legislature, and I'd just like to say, for every side, from the board to the crowd, I have been impressed. This has been carried on, at least tonight, in a very proper fashion, and I wish the national media and a lot of politicians were here to watch it. Thank you.
So, oh, one more. I'm gonna call it a day pretty soon.
I just wanted to say thank you to the board for being open-minded and listening to a change in time, having the courage to start the conversation, because the public came forward, and having the courage to evolve that. But I also just wanted to say thank you for demonstrating to our students that their voice, in a peaceful and strategic manner, can really have a powerful outcome. And we are all looking forward to seeing what you guys do next for us. Thank you, seniors and high school students.
Okay.
I have something quick to say.
All right.
Sorry. So I have noticed that a lot of African-Americans that have spoken are, pretty much every single one of them are, against keeping the name. I know I may not look it, but I am part-black. I come from a black family, and this name does not mean slavery, or anything that everyone else is saying it comes from. You know, like that other lady said, she just gave birth. My mom has two children that are little and will be going to school. You know, I am proud to be graduating as a Rebel this year. I am proud to be a Rebel. So just because you're African-American or black doesn't mean that the Rebel name connects to slavery and Confederacy. Like, it doesn't. It's trying to unite the entire school together. It's who we are. And if we change it, there's diversity right now, but imagine how much diversity will happen if we change the name. The people that want to keep the name will then be possibly upset that we are now changing the name, so it's just gonna go back. It's just gonna keep going back and forth. In my eyes, the Rebels is a name. It doesn't define who we are, unless we let it define who we are, and our history and our past. And we shouldn't let it. And also, as a captain of the cheerleading team, we say cheers with the words Rebels in it. We will have to change so much, and I really do not like disrespect.
I'm sorry, excuse me. We're gonna be respectful of whoever's speaking. Thank you.
We say the Rebel name in a lot of our cheers, in a lot of our sidelines, and we are very proud of it. We support our teams by saying Rebels. Do we have to take that away, and have to change the entire name, because some people in the school don't like it? I understand, I completely understand where they're coming from, when they say that, you know, it ties back to slavery. I get it. But we don't have a Confederate flag hanging in our school. We don't have the mascot anymore. We changed that it said Captain Rebel in our gym floor. We changed everything that students have felt disrespected by. We have, for the past decades. Why is this continuing to still happen? It is a name that we should be able to keep, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'm gonna bring it back to the board now. We're gonna move on. So I asked the board, is there an action the board would like to take tonight? You gonna put that microphone on?
I'm gonna try.
All right.
Maybe this'll work. I would like to make a motion that the board accept the recommendation of administration to retire the Rebel nickname, effective August of 2017, and move forward on a process as outlined.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay, we have a move to recess. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have two, any discussion? We are in recess for 10 minutes. Agenda item number nine, Governor's Budget Proposal. We had put this on based on the Governor's Budget Proposal. Martin?
Your mic on.
Can you provide an update about whether or not you think there's anything that we need to worry about with the Governor's proposal in our budget?
Not, we should go full steam ahead. As far as I understand, it's not moving very fast in the House, and I think the Senate voted six to nothing against a bill that would've changed the date.
Right.
Senate Committee, Senate Education Committee. And I don't believe the House committee has voted on it yet, but I think we're safe to be proceeding now. What other kind of requirements are gonna come, I don't know. I mean, what else is gonna come from this conversation that might affect next year's budget? I don't know.
So we had warned this as a kind of a precautionary action, in case next year did something and we felt like we needed to take some action, so I don't hear any action needed.
No.
Any other conversations from the board members on this? Okay, then we'll move along. Master Planning and Visioning, David. Whoop, where are you going, my friend?
Doors.
Door, see it for you.
Are there doors? Because, well, maybe.
Yeah, they're starting to dwindle a lot. We can...
John, you got it.
Master Planning and Visioning.
So let me just, I haven't done a lot on this. I still owe you some work. When the board made the decision back a bit ago, you identified four areas. The very specific was to create or form one or more subcommittees to work on the work with me moving forward. I'm in the process of looking at, number one, identifying ways in which we'll monitor. So I'm trying to identify with my staff, what will be the targeted areas that we're going to identify, that we're going to monitor, and then be able to report back to you based on those specific timelines. So I'm in the process of doing that right now. I don't have a draft for you. I am in the process. I will get that to you. That's a critical component. I think the other part that will be contingent upon the budget will be a closer look at the high school and the middle school upgrades, both from the mechanical, structural, electrical, as well as a committee that will be formed to look at the wants and needs educationally. So that will be also, I'm a little bit unsure of whether that will be kind of a two-committee or a four-committee process. I want to also be sensitive to how they'll all feed in, back into me, back into you, around informing that. So I guess at this point, I owe you some additional clarity before I kick it off. So I don't know if you have specific concerns. I'm sure you do, you haven't had a chance to look at it. I know the time is ticking, so...
Any questions from the board on this one, at this point?
I guess one thing I didn't hear in that was, there was also, one of our action items in that motion was to prioritize a study of Chamberlain, and a contingency plan for that. So I'm sure it's on your agenda.
It is. You're right.
But I just wanted to make sure that we were still all on the same page with regard to the various pieces of work.
Yeah, and I think I kind of put that into the same category, like, what are the identifiable components that will trigger concerns? We also have some sound issues in there as well for Chamberlain, so, I mean, that would be added to what we would say the contingency plan specifically for Chamberlain, and how we are able to deliver the equitable educational services to the students there. And so that is part of the four areas that the board has asked. So I'm fine to be able to give this back to you, probably the, you know, the first or second, first or second meeting in March, with some more detail on that. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Then move us on to update on negotiations. Who is gonna provide that update?
I can give an update on, I'm not gonna use that mic, an update on the subcommittee's meetings with the Educators Association. We had another working session on the 23rd, I believe, and we have our next working session scheduled for February 13th.
13th.
13th, I think it is. So the conversation is active, and we'll keep you posted.
Not a lot to report yet on the ESPU. We will have our next meeting with them on Tuesday, and we will be, yeah, discussing parts of the proposal that weren't provided last time. So we had given ourselves two meetings to provide proposals to one another, so the sections that were not covered last time will be covered this time.
Great. Any questions? All right. All right. School Board Guidelines on Social Media Communications, for the last time.
I move that we approve.
Who?
Guidelines?
No discussion whatsoever. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Now, is there any discussion?
Looks good.
All right.
After only five months of work.
Glacial comes to mind, I think someone told us one time. All right, as a motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have School Board Guidelines on Social Media. We will update the adopted date on that document. Review topics for the other paper.
How about our guidelines for social media communications?
Perhaps an update on what we're doing with our name might be of an order for our next article. I'm just throwing it out there as a possibility.
That might be well-covered.
I have a feeling that'll be well-covered as well.
Won't be in our words.
True.
I just have a question. Sorry, it's on the...
No.
But about the junior rep on the school board.
Ah, yes.
I've had some questions from students and teachers about that issue. I just wondered if there's any updates on that.
We've been waiting for an update as well.
Yeah, so I'm trying to get a meeting with the student Isaiah. I'm drawing a blank on her...
Alex.
Alex's name? Yeah. So I'm trying to get that set up through Delina, and I think it's soon to happen. I'm hoping either the end of this week or first part of next. So, and then we'll start with the process.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. But not to pull us away from the next other paper article that we still need to make a decision on.
Budget's in this week, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's all.
And is there some...
Well, I think we will have had a discussion about what the process might be, in terms of Rebel name, and I really do think that, in our own words, might be a good time to just outline what we discussed.
Yeah, I think it's... Right. Because there'll be the discussion about, it's happening, but then we can put in our words what we think, what the practical things are that are gonna happen, to inform the public and the community. So then we need, who is up next? You did the last one, right?
I think I'm up next.
You're up? Okay.
Do we have a date for that, or...
I don't know the date. You don't? Do you, Meg, off the top of your head? Due date on the...
It's usually on the bottom of your super agenda.
Yeah, it's not...
It's not on this one, I don't think.
Not here.
We can get that date. We have it. We don't have it tonight, but we'll get it to you, Elizabeth.
Okay. It should be, I think, four weeks from last Thursday, so whatever that turns out to be, because, yeah, it's the deadline for the last round.
All right. Any other conversations on the other paper articles? Any other ideas? The other paper has asked of us a couple times that we give them a running list and who's gonna do it, but we have yet to been able to couple that together, so...
I'll do social media next month.
All right, there we go. We got two coming up.
The only thought I had would be, I know it's been a board desire to really increase participation, voter participation, and so I'm wondering about, you know, with some of the data that we've done, Martin, you started, we've kept that up to date, I wonder about, you know, the encouragement of voting districts...
Before the vote, or after? Before the vote or after?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think before. I think probably that will be too late though, won't it? Well, it depends on when that-
It would have to be-
I think the other paper does have some policies about what we can-
Yeah, I'm just trying to encourage-
Get close to the town meeting day, too.
I don't know. I think that's probably not gonna work, but just the data on what we've collected and, you know, the participation, kind of our data that we've collected, it's probably not gonna work now that I think-
Well, let's, let's put it in there in the hopper and we can come back to on the fifteenth.
We typically report it after, so, and provided kind of some directions on how we best connect with various parts of our zone districts, you know.
Did, did you want to consider that in lieu of?
Well, it's like it's gonna be hard because I was just thinking about the messaging, you know, it's, you know, we appreciate your feedback, your feedback is provided through, you know, your participation in our meetings, in the, in the process by which the city has for, you know, receiving your information, and I don't think there's anything wrong with saying this is what our participations are and we're looking to improve that, you know.
Yeah, speaking of that, we usually had Mr. Burke be pretty active trying to get us to help people get out to vote and, and maybe Isaiah as well at school because he's got a bunch of eighteen-year-old friends.
Can register.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we are, we are still doing the absentee, you know, the similar that you can click on, you know, our corner and you can get to the absentee and, and the information, so that's still teed up to happen.
Is it, is it available now? It doesn't seem like it could be.
Uh, no, not yet. No.
Do we know the date so that we can cut out?
Um, we have it. I can't, I don't know exactly off the top of my head what they are, Julie.
That's fine.
Also, if we want to get the word out there, same-day voter registration this year.
All right, so where I think we ended is we are still targeting Elizabeth the right on update on the Rebel name process for now. We've got a couple other conversations, maybe we'll come back to on the fifteenth. Hearing nobody argue with me, we'll assume that's right. All right. School board director orientation conversation. I think, Bridgette, this is something you had started us with.
Yeah, Elizabeth and I had had a brief discussion about it, and-
And I want to apologize, Bridgette, I didn't, I didn't make copies. I probably should have made copies for the other board members.
I did not make copies either since it had been BCC'd to everyone, so my apologies about that. The real idea behind this was just that it really, it frankly did come from me with a lot of support from Elizabeth. It's just feeling like it takes a while to get up to speed as a new board member, and I just thought that it would be helpful and welcoming since we're gonna have two new board members, to really sit down with them and say, here's the reading list, and yes, it's a bit daunting, but you'll feel a lot better having gotten through it. And, and also just to sort of spend some time talking about how we communicate, what the right ways are to go about getting things on the agenda, just some of these procedural things that aren't really covered just by reading our policies and procedures, but just sort of some of the norms, I would say, of the board that we have, we thought would be helpful for the new members, and we thought that it would have to be a warned meeting. We thought it made sense for the three continuing board members to, to try to meet with the two new board members as soon as possible after town meeting day. So if, I don't feel-
I was gonna say, I think we also thought it might be good to schedule that working session of the board as soon as possible and that the agenda could include a lot of these onboarding activities.
Yep. And the topics that I had here, I mean, maybe we should just, I should, maybe we should either get feedback next time on the specific topics or any input that people have, or, you know, it could be done one-on-one, you know, just by email. We, there's definitely more that could be in here, but we didn't want to completely overwhelm people, so we kind of picked, you know, four topics, general orientation, master planning and visioning, budget and finances, and negotiations as kind of our, our most pressing topics that people are gonna have to get up to speed on as quickly as possible. There are probably three or four others that come to mind that we could also add, but I think this probably sets us off on, on a, on the right foot.
I think, I think that's great. The one thing I would add is that we should, and maybe we can think about this in like three tiers, and I'm really thankful for some additional time from the board. I think you already give a lot of time, but it would be great to, to include you in the onboarding. One of the things that we've done actually since you came on, Bridgette, is, you know, through Karen and your job description, is looking at kind of our safe schools, which is part of our training instrument, which includes confidentiality, a series of things. So I think that, I mean, I'd like to have us be included in the, like, a tier of that work.
Right.
I think V S B A may be in a tier of that work, and then, as you mentioned, kind of thirdly, these are the buckets that you want to help connect and, and update the new board members on those items and solicit questions. And so I think we could, we could look at those, I mean, at the same time, I want to be careful not to, like, you know, somebody's coming on and they've got, you know, twenty-five, thirty hours of work before they have the first meeting, but-
Right.
I think we can do it, and it's much more streamlined. Some of it can be online, some of it's personal, too. So we've, we've worked on that within the last year, actually.
And I forget, I apologize, I didn't print that out either. Did you have open meeting protocols and procedures in there? Because that's important, and I think we gotta make sure that the new people come on and understand what the protocols are.
Typically, that's covered in, in the V S B A.
Yeah.
You know, Robert's real open meeting law violations, and they do a nice job that way. Not to say that it's not good to have it, you know, shared again, so.
Does, well, let me ask the board this, does, I mean, conceptually, does anybody have a concern with an orientation onboarding, warned meeting? Because then I think we're just talking about, well, what are we covering in the meeting? So I think, I'm not seeing anybody shaking their head, so why don't we provide feedback to, Bridgette, are you the right one to send feedback to on the details? And you can work with her on overlap within your orientation onboarding and V S B A?
And we're kind of looking at that, right, in that March, March month, right?
Yep.
So we'll kind of queue that up and figure out a date that we would've, you know, set a working session.
Good. Just checking to see if anybody's got any other comments.
Did you all want a copy of my statement? I didn't print copies, but I could maybe send an email if you wanted that.
Yeah, I need to make.
She puts it in her mouth.
Great. All right. Is that, we wanted to get out of that topic? Are you good?
Yes, yes.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. All right. That moves us to item agenda fifteen, setting the agenda for our February fifteenth meeting.
I think we need to add like three monitoring reports. Come on, it's like a parting present for you.
I can already feel a cold coming on, February fourteenth.
You never should. I mean, come on!
David, well, we have had, I don't think you and I are meeting with Helen and Kevin before February fifteenth, right? This is the twenty-fourth?
We're meeting with them on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Right. We were trying to see if we could get something earlier, but I'll explore that with, I'm meeting with Kevin, as I said, on Friday.
Okay.
I may actually have a conflict with this meeting.
On the fifteenth?
The fifteenth, yeah. I know.
Isaiah, are you gonna be there for the budget communication discussion?
Um.
You have a conflict, too?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay. We want you to help us sell the budget.
Right. All right. Other than the city and school collaboration potentially coming off, does anybody else have any adjustments?
Will we have any update at that stage on Rebel identifier or steps, or are we saying just not, we're not even gonna mention it until the first meeting in March?
But I think it's okay. I, maybe I'll just put under my, in the superintendent's report, just update.
Even if it's two sentences about, yeah, this is-
What's happening within the school.
What's happening in the background.
Yeah, just to keep it on.
I just think people are gonna have a lot of questions about that.
Really wise. All right. Unless there's any other adjustments? All right. Anything under the future items that people want to move forward?
Anything you need to do before? You're good?
Yeah.
Your last chance, it's your last chance.
So I'm not, this isn't, I'm not sure where to put this one. So it may be useful for us to have, because I have two board members going off, see if we can trigger some conversation or at least the evaluation process for our beloved superintendent here, just so that we have some kind of transition in that process, because I think you guys will be doing that relatively soon after we're off the board, so I'm not, it's really a question for the entire board, do we want to get that started so that you have some of that, or will be the three of you and two new board members contributing to that? So it's really just a question.
I think it'd be good, I do.
All right. All right. So we'll put something on about, I'll trigger something, like I'll send the forms out like I did last year and see if we can start that process, and then we'll hand it off to whoever takes over the chair room. All right. Very good. Brings us to consider the minutes of the January eighteenth meeting. Any questions, comments, adjustments?
Yeah, I had a little thing. Hold on. So this administration and staff on the, Mr. Samara was also in attendance.
Under the students and staff.
Under administration and staff, yeah.
Any other comments? If not, those minutes are adopted as amended, which brings us to the consent agenda. You want to highlight those items for us, David?
Sure. So you have, you have a resignation, a longtime employee, and you have that letter. Claire Buckley, she's been a longtime librarian at the South Burlington High School. Most of you, I am sure, have seen her as you've passed through our community slash school library. And again, I think consistent with our practice before, I would send on your behalf a letter thanking her for her service. She's giving you early notice of her planned retirement. The other one on here is the photography bid, and I kind of reiterate what occurred leading up to that decision. And again, the decision is highlighted on the back of that page, which is recommending Beltrami for Chamberlain and then AMV for Orchard and Rick Markoff.
And those are the, that's who the schools are currently using as well. Is that fair?
It's what's asked.
And this is a one-year deal?
Currently, one year, and we'll continue the process. We'd like to make it more than one year in the future, but it's fair to the process and the bit that it laid out.
Any questions from the board on this? Any comments from the public on this one? All right. Then the consent agenda is approved. Any comments on the accounts payable orders, twenty-eight and twenty-nine? Hearing none, except for that speaker. Those are approved.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn in a second. Any, any conversation at all? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for your service tonight, everyone.